All this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Benjeline?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Potter? Taylor?
Here. Join us for our pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Conditions and deletions we have three additions, J-14B Windermiller proposal, J-14C oracial construction change order, and at L medical marijuana grant section. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. employee recognition, resolution 1928.
Motion to approve resolution 19-28 extending appreciation for Brad Robert Denike's dedicated service.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor, roll call please.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter? Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, the motion is approved and Commissioner Beevall has requested to read the suit of text.
Resolution number 19-28 extending appreciation for Robert Denike, I'm sorry, Brad Robert Denike's dedicated service. Whereas the Wexford County Board of Commissioners would like to personally thank Brad Robert Denike for his committed commitment to Wexford County for the past 24 years. Brad worked with dedication, dignity, and pride to meet the needs of Wexford County. And whereas on October 31st, 2019, Brad retired from his position as a deputy sheriff. And whereas Brad began his career as Wexford County on May 24th, 1995, as a marine patrol deputy. Whereas on December 8th, 1995, Brad became a full-time deputy in the law enforcement division of the Wexford County Sheriff's Office. Whereas over the past 24 years, Brad has served in various roles such as a ship sergeant, a field training officer in April 1998, and a secondary road patrol deputy. And whereas throughout his career, Brad has served as a member of multi-jurisdictional task force, Traverse City's Narcotics Team, as a detective during June 2008 through June 2010. Whereas Brad has served as an emergency response team member of the Northern Michigan Mutual Aid Task Force in November 1996. And whereas Brad has also a patrol rifle instructor in July of 2005, a less-than-lethal weapon instructor in February 1999, and arson investigator in February 1997. And now therefore it be resolved that the Wexford County Board of Commissioners wishes you, Brad Robert Denike, the best in future endeavors. I once again thanks you for your efforts over the 24 years while you served Wexford County as a very dedicated and appreciative employer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Brad.
Thank you Brad.
We have no preservation. Then reports will open the floor to public comments.
Hello, I'm Lisa Lee from Alliance for Economic Success. And we are the economic development organization that came to you approximately six months ago or so and asked to collaborate with the county on a grant request for the HVAC system for the Wex. We are successful in our application in the amount of $95,000 and I just wanted to let you all know that. And I wanted to say thank you for allowing us to partner with you. And I wanted to thank Janet for your county administrator for all of her hard work because she had to put quite a bit of time involved in it. And the folks from Moon Sports Management who have been absolutely awesome to work with. So my leadership group has authorized us to help you through the process to make sure that all the i's get dotted and the j's get crossed to make sure that we meet all the criteria to accept the grant. But I did want to just let you know that we just found this out yesterday. So we have quite a bit of paperwork to do yet. But thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Hey Carrie, can I say something? Hey Lisa, I just want to thank you because I remember the fact you came and you know, I talked to you quite a bit. I met with you and worked on some grants with you and stuff. And you know, you're talking about $95,000. So I, and the board, I speak for the board, appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a good example to show how we all work together, how success is happening. So I appreciate it.
Any other? We'll close public comments. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes nine zero. Moving into agenda items. J-1, public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing on the Wexford County's 2020 budget.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call please.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, we are in public hearing. Anybody want to come forward and speak on the budget? Please state your name.
Gordon Maxwell Cadillac. What's your doing in Wexford County? Tax payer and five, six inches of property. It's come to our attention, there's a lot of money missing through the management of the former Department of Public Works. Between the village of Neese and Haring Township, some auditing was done. We borrowed money from rural development. When the DPW closed, there was no money. And what can they do with the money they were collecting all these years? Now those two departments alone have a great deal more money in their accounts. Because when I write checks, instead of going to the DPW, it goes directly to the treasurer of that municipality. We will find out when the next three townships are meeting last night when they thought it was all about money. There'll be some more auditing. How could you be in this bad of a position after having collected so much money all these years? What happened to the money? So I would ask that this township, or this county board, put an entry into your budget somewhere to start putting money into it. Sooner or later, somebody's got to pay it back. The DPW was a department of the county formed by the county commissioners. At last night's Lake Mitchell Improvement Board meeting, that question came up. Why are things so bad? Bob Gilte as the chairman of the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority said that some time ago, on short notice, the county commissioners decided to pull the plug on the DPW and dissolved it. And there was nothing there. So that group had to become known as the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority. That was his response to why is the system so bad? And why was there absolutely no money? Well, that agency collected money for about seven entities throughout the county for several years. There was a lot of money out there. Now there seems to be none. I'm sure that we're going to find problems in the future. Someone's got to pay it back. That was a department appointed and overseen by the county commissioners. The burden comes back to you whether you were here then or not. So I'd ask you that in this budget, you put money aside so that you start taking care of things. The longer it goes, especially with another rural development application for money, they've been through this twice. They'll look into this again now and say, well, what was going on? Where did all that money go and why? We currently, fortunately, have nobody else that knows anything about it because everybody has retired and gone away. Myself, having been up here a few times asking questions about it, nobody runs up on it. But it's not over with. It'll come back to you. And it's going to be a few hundred thousand dollars, but somehow you're going to have to cope with that. Thank you.
Thank you Gordon.
Thank you sir.
Anybody else wish to come forward? Then we'll close the public hearing and move on to resolution 1926.
Motion to approve resolution 1926 fiscal year 2020 budget resolution and general appropriations act.
Support.
We have a motion and support Janet.
What you have in front of you is, the act is, the resolution is required by the state that we pass. Everything here is a state requirement, except in budget roster that's kind of attachment. The numbers here showing the original budget is, are the numbers that were presented to you, the BSA format, a couple weeks ago. The state members just rearranged in a different format. On the page 12, they're showing the revenues. Those don't really match the BSA numbers because these are the requirements from the state. We have to set them up according to the charter of accounts. That's how those numbers are derived. It's all from numbers in the second, third pages that you see. It's just rearranged differently because of the state requirements. It looks a little different from previous years because we just formatted things a little bit different. On page 15 there, we've kind of cleaned up some of that, showing the different frequencies for the allocations and how things are actually paid. Basically just reflecting what we do. And the budget roster has been updated. It again looks a little bit different. Just kind of cleaning things up. I find this, I'm sure to read this way, which the department had number in there. The general fund departments are now separated from special fund numbers. Special funds are on page 23. So hopefully it's a, it'll easier to read the course then.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero.
One last thing, I forgot. Now that this has been approved and passed, thank you very much. We'll get you the books showing all the approved budgets now instead of just the recommended.
Thank you. Agenda item J-3, resolution 19-29.
Motion to approve resolution 19-29, resolution regarding the city of Cadillac's designation of commercial rehabilitation district under the public act 210 of 2005.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item J-4, asset management plan.
Motion to approve infrastructure alternative in court development and present an asset management plan for the city of Kewaugh.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item J-5, MMRMA.
Motion to approve the $350,153 MMRMA annual liability insurance for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, and authorize the county administrator Janet Koch to sign the documentation electronically.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item J-6, MSUE annual agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement for extension services between Wexford County and MSUE on behalf of MSUE for a period of January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Roll call please.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-7, veterinarian service agreement. Motion to exercise the second option to renew the term of the veterinarian services agreement by one additional year, extending the term of the agreement to December 31st, 2020, and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of notice to Dr. Meyer on behalf of Wexford County.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Is that usually a one-year or two-year thing?
One-year is good enough.
One-year?
The options are one-year at a time, but it's not to be the end of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call please.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-8, year-end budget adjustments.
Motion to approve the administrator and treasurer to transfer funds without board approval to ensure no departments are in the negative condition of the year.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-9, fiscal year 2019, 2020 snowmobile grant agreement.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2019-20 ORV law enforcement program grant agreement in the amount of $17,000, and authorize the chairman to sign the grant agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Roll call.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item J-10, policy number C-4. Motion to approve the revisions made to policy C-4.0, official travel expense, business expense, removing reference to the general county office in attachments 1 and 2.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Roll call please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-11, retired vehicles.
Motion to approve disposing of several older vehicles from the sheriff's department through publicly advertised means.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Roll call.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-11A, retired vehicle.
Motion to approve selling the 2007 Tahoe for $1 to the Soho County Conservation History.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta? Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item J-12, Control Solutions. Motion to approve the HVAC contract with Control Solutions, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $25,060, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Roll call please.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-13, AT&amp;T.
Motion to approve the AT&amp;T Complete Link 2.0, agreement for a term of one year, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, we have to roll call.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Aye.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-14, committee of the whole.
Motion to form a committee on the whole for the purposes of discussing central dispatch 911.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call please.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, we are on the committee of the whole, Jan.
Just a quick review of what you have in front of you, the Windermiller thing. This was kind of an expected cost. We hoped it would be lower. It was really hard. It's the connection between the jail and dispatch building. Part of that came to you already. We were hoping to get a cheaper price through PFM, but it turned out it was actually more. So this is the lowest we could get for that. The other one is a change order that came through. The emergency center kind of needs access to keep this late and the rooms they can keep track of stuff. So that's where that one's coming from.
Any questions, Jan?
Motion arising in report of findings of committee of the whole.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are back in regular session. Progress report, Mr. Skybrow.
There's, was quite a bit happened out there since our last, last moves. Basically, we have power out there. The exterior building is often pretty much completed, doors and windows open, so they can secure the building, lock it up. And there's heat on both floors. And it kind of turned a corner where things should progress a little bit more rapidly at this point. So, and this afternoon, we had copies. The rough plumbing was inspected and approved yesterday, as well as the mechanical. And the electrical was approved, approved, the rough electrical wasn't approved last week. And the rough building inspection was done and approved. So there'll be, should be, their drywalling and everything, it should be done by the end of next week. So things are going pretty good now. Everybody happy here.
Thanks Bob. Any questions?
Bob, where are we at?
Thank you for your questions.
Thanks Bob.
Thanks Bob.
Agenda item J-14, Windermiller proposal.
Motion to approve Windermiller proposal, JWS 19-204, revision 1 for the correctional borrowing in an amount not to exceed $9,600, and authorize the chairman to sign the proposal.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. J-14C, contract change order. Motion to approve orship construction contract change order number 006 for additional wiring in rooms 102, 103, 106, and 113 in the amount of $3,513, and authorize the chairman to sign the change order.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Beevall?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes. Gents, we're not going into closed session, so agenda item J-15A, POAM 9312. Let's get the motion out for the. Motion to ratify the POAM 9312 dispatch agreement for the term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2022, and authorize the parties to sign the agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Jan.
This is the other recommendation we have. The attorney kind of cites the highlights of changes in the contract. There are some minor things that we've kind of cleaned up, but the big things are getting in the contract that health insurance contribute 10%, which was agreed before, a lot of understanding. Retirement's eventually 5%. And the wages were a dollar increase for 2020 and 50 cents for 2122. And the vacation is, will be converted to equal.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Probert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjeline?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Beevall?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Agenda item 15B, POAM 312. Motion to approve the tentative agreement reached with the POAM on December 16th, 2019, in the sheriff's office's deputy's unit.
Support.
We have a motion and support, Jan.
Want to have a nice letter? This is what just got approved, ratified yesterday morning by the, by the union. What we have is a little corner, I don't know if it was signed by, by the union, the TA. And is that worth proof?
Thank you.
Similar with the Natchez, $1,200, 21 cents for 21, 22. Vacation goes to equal, contribution to 5% for pensions. There's some other cleanup things. And thank you to special field training officers. Friday morning, but on the flip side. So, the flip side, it's basically just putting in writing, putting things back together.